I call the meeting order. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in the nation's honor.
Roll call. Please note that all nine board members are present. Agenda item two, executive session announcement. We had an executive session before this meeting, and the purpose of the executive session was legal consultation. Moves us to number three, public comment. The first public comment, there are two in the meeting. The first one is restricted just to agenda items, so that the board can hear opinion on agenda items before voting. Is there any public comment in the room? Is there any public comment online? No, thank you. Right, that moves us to presentations. We have one presentation tonight from our middle school students about the National Junior Honor Society.
At this point, I'd like to, Ms. McElvein, please come on up and introduce who...
Oh.
Fantastic. For the people at home, if you can kind of speak as close to you can to this speaker, that would be great.
Okay. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Mrs. McElvein, Deborah McElvein. I'm the National Junior Honor Society advisor of Pots Grove Middle School. So, what is the National Junior Honor Society? Our mission is to recognize and encourage academic excellence, as well as leadership, service, character, and citizenship among the middle school students. The NJHS provides opportunities for students to develop strong moral and ethical principles, engage in service projects and school-based projects, and take a leadership role in school and the community. By fostering a commitment to scholarship and service, NJHS helps students grow into responsibility, active citizens who make a positive, who will make a positive impact in our world. I would like to first introduce our members. We have Addie Federal. She's the president of the National Junior Honor Society. Joey Kobol is a member. Emily Buell is a member. Sophia Wallace Sutton is also a member. We have Tyler Reinhardt and Finnegan Wilson. And they're going to continue with the presentation. I'm going to step aside, okay? Thank you. So, if you want to go, next slide. Okay, go ahead, Addie.
So, what are the three, what are the NJHS membership requirements? The students must have distinguished honors for the first, second, and third marking periods. They must complete an application, which is a 300-word essay that basically proves why you should be in it and explains one of the criteria that you are under. And you must complete service hours during, service hours during the school year, and you have to maintain outstanding academics. The induction ceremony. So, the induction ceremony is when members are officially welcomed into the NJHS, and it is an occasion that represents the four, five pillars of the NJHS, which are scholarship, service, leadership, character, and citizenship. And it's a big, fun thing. You get to hold candles like this. You have to say a little pledge. And it basically is a big honor thingy to do. So, community service projects are, that we do are Keep Pennsylvania Beautiful, Holiday Cookie Exchange and Donation, Marine Corps Reserve Toys for Tots, God's Kitchen, and Veteran Flag Replacement.
For Pennsylvania, Keep Pennsylvania Beautiful. Every year, we participate in a Keep Pennsylvania Beautiful cleanup after school by picking up litter around the school grounds. Excellent. We also celebrate Earth Day by taking part in another school cleanup litter event after school to help make our world healthier. Our school is recognized as a litter-free zone for doing this.
Every holiday season, the NJHS members have a cookie exchange event. Each student makes an extra bag of cookies that is donated to Trinity UCC Church in Pottstown for the Community Meal Program.
Oh, Marine Toys for Tots. The NJHS hosts the drive. Toys for Tots, each home room donating, donating a toy, whichever one gets the most gets a breakfast surprise, which is the donut party.
And Toys for Tots donated to church in Pottstown.
For the U.S. Marine Corps Drive Reserve. Next slide.
NJHS members help prepare and serve a meal for less than four children at Emmanuel Luther Church in Pottstown. They also donated desserts that were shared with everyone.
During this community service project, students from the NJHS membership, they went and replaced tattered flags at the St. Aloisius Cemetery on Buchard Room. We replaced about 300 flags, and we've been doing this community service project for over four years.
Not only do we do community-based activities, we also do school-based activities like student academic recognition, student of the month, peer tutoring, Haven a Heart fundraising, National Junior Honor Society Outstanding Achievement Award, National Junior Honor Society sponsoring Honor Roll Picnic.
Students of the month are recognized with a free lunch pass, like a free snack pass in the lunchroom, and then you get to sit wherever you want for a month.
Peer tutoring comes every other Tuesday, and I usually spend time with sixth tutors helping them with math.
NJHS members would sell heart-shaped light pops Valentine's Day week. That were all the proceeds and money was donated to the Haven a Heart fundraising.
So, the NJHS Outstanding Achievement Award is a scholarship that is awarded to 500 different students. That is $500 toward their college savings account. Sophie Colton, who was an eighth grader last year, won it, and I have applied to get it, and I have not heard back, so wish me luck. But it's a big thing, and yeah, that's why I won it.
The NJHS sponsors an Honor Roll Picnic at the end of the school year for all students who earned honors first, second, and third marking periods. Have like a snack table and outside activities for all to enjoy. Next slide.
That's it. Okay, thank you. I want to also thank the students for taking their time to come out to give the presentation. Not only do they excel in academics, but they're wonderful students. They're good people.
Thank you.
Ms. McElvein, while you're getting together for a picture here, is this, I don't remember, are these some of the guys that turned out when we worked with Mr. Wagner at Lower Pots Grove cleaning the parks?
Yes.
Okay. Well, now, we did it again. We did it in the end of this fall, right?
Yeah, oh, yes, they were.
Okay, and there might be a spring event, too.
Yes.
Okay. Very nice.
Thank you, Mrs. McElvein, for your leadership. And students, I want to thank you. You should be proud of your academic achievements, and not only the academic achievements, but your community and the school-based services. The world needs more people like you who not only achieve personally, but give back to their schools and their communities through your peer tutoring and everything else you're doing. So, I applaud each of you for the work that you're doing, not only for your grades and your achievement, but for your willingness to give back and to help others. On behalf of the board, thanks very much. This moves us to a highlight of the evening, which is agenda item five, our student rep report of Cecily and Adam.
Hey, guys. All right. Should I just start us off now, then? Okay. So, students are preparing for the PGHS Prom of 2026. The dance will take place on April 25th, and the theme is A Night in Greece, as well as students will be attending the post-prom event. So, so far, the Bolero Bowling Alley, who is hosting, has 55 of 250 people signed up for the event, with prizes like TVs, a PS5, gift cards, a Dyson Airwrap, and a lot more.
I'm going to start with something that's not on my report. Sorry, I forgot to add it. This month, we're doing Role Models for Change. So, basically, it's members of Avedum, and anyone basically could volunteer to do it. So, basically, Role Models for Change is a group of people who are basically battling vaping and drug use in high schools. And so, basically, a group of students got trained. So, we had a four-hour-long meeting about the presentation that we will be doing. So, we will be in class with ninth graders, and we'll be talking to them one-on-one about the dangers of vaping. And we have presentations done, and we will be doing that this month. I think it's the 24th, so I think it's the day before prom. So, yeah. My second thing, where should I start? Back to Avedum, they held their biggest fundraiser of the year, which was their first annual Doon Don Tournament, which was originally Dr. Farady's idea, so thanks for that. The winning team, Brandon McGinnley, Owen Mouts, Carter Berg, and Jack Thompson, and Julius Marshall, won that night. And the tournament was held to support Avedum's message of shattering the silence surrounding anxiety, depression, and other important issues facing teens.
And as I'm sure a few of you guys saw me there, the art department hosted their annual art show. On March 17th, students got the chance to show off their art to parents, faculty, and viewers of our high school fiddler-on-the-roof play. Seniors got to show off their themed artworks through the senior boards, which were organized beautifully. So, shout out to all the art teachers, Ms. King, Ms. Kalanowski, and Ms. Pierce, who organized the event. Thank you.
On Friday, March 31st, PGHS and PGMS students teamed up with Michaela's Voice to visit the elementary schools. The students, along with the Michaela's Voice team, led an art project focused on fostering inclusivity and building positive school culture. So, that was cool to see how both groups of volunteers combined together. So, yeah, that was cool.
All right. And then, Pots Grove High School Boys and Girls Lacrosse began this month. Congrats to our girls team for going 3-0, as far as I've recorded. So, it's a truly great season for them. And then, the boys team have scored the win on their opening game. So, good job.
Ringing Rocks and Lower Pots Grove had STEM Day, in which they got to set up cereal-box chain reactions. Thanks to the teachers' involves, the students were able to set up a total of 208 cereal boxes at Rocks. I didn't get the number for Lower, but that was the number for Rocks, so.
All right. And then, on to my last bullet point. This is talking about Pots Grove High School Track. So, it started this, within this last month, at least, and then it includes, sorry, includes javelin, shot put, discus, long jump, triple jump, high jump, the 100-meter, 200-meter, 400-meter, and their hurdles, and then the 800-meter, 1600-meter, and 3200-meter, as well as the 4x100 relay, the 4x400 relay, and the 4x800 relay. Students attending track practice every week, students attend track practice every week except for Friday, and they have been having a lot of ton, a whole ton of fun while doing it. Sorry, can't speak.
This is my last thing. The PGMS Theater Department held their production of Susie Gold and Musical Junior. Their shows were held March 27th through the 29th, and they truly brought in a crowd all three nights. And then, back to my Role Models for Change thing, forgot to add, each group of students got the chance to kind of make the presentation their own. So, basically, we got sent the presentation. It's like a template with like the basic information that we were taught, and then, basically, we can either add stuff or add in games, like icebreakers and stuff. We can also do, we're doing Would You Rathers as well. So, I feel like it's a way to get students who are interested in education also a chance to get in front of a class of students and present on stuff. So, I'm excited for that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Cecily and Adam. Any questions of the student reps?
Sure. So, the end of the year is upon us. How are you guys doing? You ready to transition out of high school, ready to move up to senior?
I, I feel more ready now that I've, like, I know where I'm going. So, I think it's less confusion, honestly, for me. So, I feel like I'm ready now. But, yeah, that's what I feel.
I am prepping for a big deciding year coming up, you know? Lots of, lots of big decisions coming up, and I'm anticipating them, and I'm excited for them. So, that's a great part of growing up.
I just want to thank you, Adam, for the free portrait that I got on opening night. That's in my house.
Yeah, thank you.
And I also want to thank, I noticed that you, you guys really invested in getting around the district and reporting on other things, not just high schools. So, that's really awesome to celebrate the, our younger students as well. So, thank you.
I got a portrait from Adam also. Thank you. Thank you. It was, I had to wait in line for like 30 minutes, and that's, that's how busy this guy was that night. I don't know if you saw the difference tonight. Typically, their presentation is one goes and does everything, then the other one goes, and there was a back and forth tonight. It was really nice. It was a, it was a nice change. You pulled that off well. It looked like one of the great duets on The Voice that move you onto the next round in terms of that. So, thank you. Anything else? Agenda item six, report from our superintendent, Dr. Finity.
Thank you. Just one item this evening. This week, we will be distributing a draft of our comprehensive plan. Pennsylvania Department of Education requires that school districts complete the comprehensive planning process every three years. The comprehensive planning process relies upon input from a variety of stakeholders, including community members, staff, parents, and administration. Our planning process has included more than 30 stakeholders, including parents from each of our schools. Our Comprehensive Planning Committee members met on March 4th and March 19th, and enforced subcommittees to develop action plans aligned with our district goal areas: student achievement, school culture, safety and advocacy, and project development slash financial management. The comprehensive plan will be an action item at the April 22nd board meeting. So, thank you for everyone who's participating. This is great when we get community members together to help us create a shared vision for where we want to go. So, again, thank you so much, and we'll be presenting the final project next board meeting.
Thanks, Dr. Finity. Any questions or comments on his report?
I should have noted and thanked Mr. Vores for his leadership of this. Mr. Daniel Vores has been the, the leading voice in this, and this is no small task. So, thank you for getting all the teams together and facilitating this process.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, approval of minutes of our board meetings of March 11 and March 25.
I'd like to make a motion. We combine 7.1 along with 7.2.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes of board meetings of March 11 and March 25. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item number eight, granting of orders.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the payment of invoices for March 2025 in the amount of $4,873, or no, $4,873,817 as presented.
Motion in a second to approve the granting of orders in the amount of $4,873,817. All those, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item number nine, 9.1, granting of tenure.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve 9.1.
Motion second to approve 9.1 granting of tenure. Any discussion?
I would like to congratulate. That's a big accomplishment for those teachers. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Anything else? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. 9.2, leave of absences for support staff and professional staff.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 9.2 through 9.7.
Motion in a second to approve 9.2 through 9.7, which is leave of absences, support staff appointments, change in assignments for support staff, resignations of support staff, non-athletic appointments, appointments of supplemental staff, and the evening academy program substitute staffing. Any discussion on any of those items? All those in favor? Those opposed? The motions pass. Agenda item number 10, action item business, Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center budget.
I'd like to make, make a motion. We approve 10.1.
Motion in a second to approve the Montgomery Career and Technology Center budget. Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda item 10.2, pre-c counts partnership agreement, or pre-K counts partnership agreement.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve 10.2.
Motion in a second to approve agenda item 10.2, the pre-K counts partnership agreement. Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And the motion passes. Agenda item 10.3, this is a motion to accept a donation from the Pots Grove Youth Wrestling Association for wrestling mats.
I'd like to make a motion that we do approve 10.3.
Motion in a second to approve 10.3 from the Pots Grove Youth Wrestling donation with a thank you to them. Any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to, oh, I'm sorry. I'd just like to thank them, and this shows where we come in with the community together. We're all together for the kids. So, thank you.
Dr. Nippert, question?
Yeah, I was watching on Channel 39 the other day. Girls wrestling is taking off in some parts of Pennsylvania. Is there any interest in girls wrestling here?
Yeah, Steve. Yeah, we got to get you on speaker, too, Steve. So, just if there's public listening, if you can get a mic somewhere. There's one here, Steve, at the front of the, front of the table.
Good question, Dr. Nippert. And girls wrestling is, is on the rise. Within our area, it's conversations that we've had. One of the things I'd like to do is get a survey out and see what our interest level is. There has been a bunch of schools that have done cooperative agreements. I'm not going to put any school district out there, but just to get the general interest out, so they can wrestle together. So, you're not essentially sending three or four girls to a duel meet, but you're sending a team of combination of potential local school districts, so they can participate in duel meets and tournaments. So, we've had preliminary discussions, but it is something that I have, that I think there's a few of our female athletes have interest in it, and something that we would like to pursue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Did we vote on this? Any other discussion on the Youth Wrestling, Wrestling Association? So, we have a motion in a second to approve the donation from the Pots Grove Youth Wrestling, Wrestling Association. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item 10.4, a confidential settlement agreement for a student.
I'd like to make, make a motion. We approve 10.4.
Motion in a second for 10.4 confidential settlement agreement for one student. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes. Moves us to agenda item 11, 11.1 through 11.4, student expulsion waivers.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve 11.1 through 11.4.
Motion in a second to approve 11.1 through 11.4, student expulsion waivers. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda item 11.5, educational services agreement with Access Learning Academy.
I'd like to make a motion. We combine 11 and approve 11.5 through 11.9.
Motion in a second to approve 11.5 through 11.9. This is a service agreement with Access Learning Academy, a conference attendance for a K-2 learning institute, conference attendance for pre-K counts, and also a conference attendant for Data Summit and for Tech Talk Live. Any discussion or questions on any of those agenda items? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Moves us to agenda item number 12, policy, approval of policies.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve 12.1.
Motion and a second to approve policies 335, 435, and 535. Any discussion on any of those policies? Those in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes. Moves us to agenda item 13, report on the April 7 meeting, yesterday meeting of the Western Center Joint Operating Committee. The meeting began with a report from the administrative director, David Livinggood. He covered six items. First was that Gilbert Architects has agreed to conduct a no-cost feasibility study for the potential expansion of the Western Center. The study is to be completed at the end of the school year. The carpentry students at the Western Center recently built a fake wall for the Marlboro Elementary School, which is a school in the Upper Perky Omen School District. So, it gave the students some real-life experience out of the shop in, in doing that work. Number three, beginning next year, the Western Center will be offering dual credit through Penn College of Technology, which is an affiliate of Penn State University, and this will be offered to students in both the electrical programs at the Western Center, as well as the welding programs at the Western Center. Item four, Pennsylvania HOSA, which is the Future Health Professionals Organization, had their state leadership conference and competition on March 26 through 28 in Lancaster, PA. The competition itself is typically combined with two types of competition. One is knowledge-based, which is typically a test, and the other is skills-based, where students have to walk into a room, and somebody says to them, "Do this." So, it is, it is both what I know, as well as what I can apply in terms of that. The Western Center sent 54 students to this conference and competition, and HOSA as an organization recognizes all students who finish in 10th place or above in the competition. So, it's a statewide competition, and had about, about 1,500 students attending from across the state. The 54 students that attended, of them 18 students, or a third of them finished in 10th place or above, and five of those 18 are Pots Grove students. Dr. Finity and his staff are working to have those five students at our March 22 meeting, where we can give them face-to-face recognition. So, he's working on that now and may want to comment, but at this meeting, I at least wanted to announce them and give a shout out to them in case they're listening. Gabriel Fruance is a senior placed 10th in Medical Law and Health Science. Kenaija Alexandra is a senior placed 7th in World Health and Disparities in Healthcare. Alicia Cranford, a senior, placed 6th in Job Seeking Skills. Zachary Strunk, a senior, placed 2nd in Sports Medicine, and Marley Flannery, also a senior, placed 1st in Interviewing Skills, and was also awarded a $2,000 scholarship. So, congratulations. So, congratulations to those five students, and I, I don't know, Dr. Finity, if there's any more you want to say?
Yes, I'll echo the congratulations, but the other thing that we're doing that we haven't done before is, we're actually, we want to highlight some of the students at the Western Center, so our communication specialist, Ms. Shadine Kleinfeldter, is actually working with leadership at Western Center to go onsite and actually kind of do a, a report from the field, so kind of take some pictures of what they do, do a, a kind of report on what that actual, that lab is all about. And I think this might help our eighth graders in making a decision whether or not they want to apply for the Western Center. So, we're excited about that.
Thank you. Students who finished in first, second, or third place in HOSA are also invited to the HOSA National Competition, which this year is being held in Nashville. Item five, there of the report in the Western Center, a, the co-op banquet luncheon is tomorrow, April ninth, from twelve to one-thirty. All board members from the three sending school districts are invited, so those of you at the table, I encourage you, you, you can still attend if you want to, or if you are attending, I, I will see you there tomorrow at that luncheon. The May fifth JOC meeting will include an update presentation on the two main goals of the Western Center, the first being creating a capital fund and the second being increasing student enrollment. The business manager of the Western Center also gave a report at the meeting last night. She said that she is beginning to see a reasonable increase in cost from suppliers, price increases, and they are telling her it is a result of the tariffs. So, that's gonna have a direct effect on the Western Center budget. Principal Craig Robinson of the Western Center reported that applications for next year, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, closed on March fifteenth. Three hundred and nine students began an online application. Not everyone who begins finishes that application, so of the three hundred and nine who started, thirty did not complete, so they have a total of two hundred and seventy-nine students who have completed applications for next year. Cosmetology was the largest of those groups, which has been typical for all of the years. Second was Introduction to Medical Careers, which is a, a first-year program that leads into then either the dental program or sports medicine, or I think there's a couple other programs there that Intro to Med leads. The administration of the Western Center is currently working on their rubric for accepting applications and expects to have all applications finalized or completed by the end of April. They expect to be able to fill between a hundred and ninety and two hundred seats. They, they are pushing on some ideas of how to increase some of the class sizes to at least get more students there, and if they hit that one ninety to two hundred, that would give the center an acceptance rate of somewhere between sixty-eight and seventy-two percent. There was a policy review at the Western Center meeting last night. They presented, we presented a second reading of twelve policies that are listed here on the sheet, a first reading of nine policies, and rescinded two policies. Two other action items from the Western Center, they approved their school and administrative calendars for twenty-five, twenty-six, and approved six facility upgrades. Dehumidification of the Precision Machine Shop for six thousand five hundred dollars, a leak in the dining room lobby for fourteen thousand seven hundred, light install precision, light, this was lights in the Precision Machining Shop for seven thousand five hundred, boiler preventative maintenance for fourteen thousand nine seventy-six, and heating and air conditioning preventative maintenance for seven thousand, seventy-three thousand five hundred dollars, and painting for thirty-three thousand six twenty-four. I continue to be amazed at the cost of stuff just to keep buildings running, to provide a safe and secure environment for students to, to, to learn in, but it's just, it's amazing, just amazing the costs. The next JOC meeting is Monday, May fifth, at seven PM at the Western Center. As a reminder, these meetings are open to the public. We don't get a lot of public attendance. I encourage you to come out just to see the place and see what, what's going on there with the Western Center. Any questions on this report or any addition? Let me start first with additions from Chuck, who was with a meeting last night, was a Zoom meeting. Patty had a conflict and, and could not make it. Anything, Chuck, you want to add? Push your button?
The, the policies.
Go ahead. Which?
There was a discussion of some of the policies that were proposed regarding reimbursement of, reimbursement of travel expenses. And, you know, if the kids win a prize and award, the custom is that, in some cases, the department, or the, in this case, it would be the Western Center would pay. That was a policy, I forget which number it was here. One twenty-one?
So, yeah, to clarify after the public that's listening here, the, the Western Center has students from three sending school districts, Pots Grove, Spring Ford, and Upper Perkyomen. So, it becomes a question of what should the policies look like for Western Center, which is a standalone unit, when you have policies that are similar and yet not totally alike for the three districts?
There are three, there are three school districts that participate in Western Center, and each one has its own equivalent to Policy one twenty-one. And part of the, part of the issue was resolving Western Center's one twenty-one with the one twenty-one from the three participating school districts.
So, the policy committee for the Western Center presented its policy for one, one twenty-one is, help me, field trips, field trips. The Pots Grove one twenty-one policy for field trips, students pay for state-level competition, but the district pays for national competition. With the thinking there, I think it's the thinking, I wasn't there, is that national is just a step above state. We are the only, the, the other two districts do not pay for national. Spring Ford is just the opposite of Pots Grove. They pay everything for state competition, and students pay for national. Upper Perkyomen, I'm here speaking for the other districts, I probably shouldn't, leaves it up to administration. It, it is somewhat broad in, in their policy. I think I can say, Chuck, but at least I was rather strongly advocating for Western Center policy to look like Pots Grove policy, to, at typically at the Western Center now, students do not pay for state, that students pay for state competition through fundraising. They were selling candy bars this past year for the students to go, and only people who finish in first place are paid for national competition at, at the Western Center. I was pushing to make the policy look more like Pots Grove. There were five people there who disagreed with me, so it, it's staying the same at Western Center, that students pay for their own state comp, state competition, and only first-place finishers are paid for by the Western Center for national competition. Chuck, is that a fair?
That, yeah. I mean, it basically, it was given, it was considered as a first reading and based, sent back, no decision was made. My hope is that either informally or, or formally, you get some input on the discussion because it was a, there was some disagreement on, as you mentioned, as to what should be done.
Yeah, it was a rather vigorous discussion.
That's a good way of, that's a gentle way of phrasing.
Any other question? Thank you, Chuck. Did, is that, that get to what you wanted to do with that?
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, like I said, I, I'd like to know what, how people feel about this. Well, on field trips for awards at competitions, because that can be a very, you know, how many kids are involved in the contest?
Are you, are you asking what we feel in terms of the JOC, like what we feel there? I think it should mirror ours. I agree with Jay on that.
Yeah.
State is a little more affordable, especially on students who are fundraising already to begin with. Let, let nationals, I, I can't even imagine, that kind of mountain they would have to climb some of these students to get the money together to do that. So, I'm, I'm with Jay on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, not just this policy, but any policy, I think we need to be very careful changing our policies to match the JOC.
I don't think anybody was proposing that
Okay.
a district change its policies.
I actually sit on the policy committee, and it's very difficult when you have three different schools with three different ideas and three different policies. So, I do my best. They work hard, though.
Any other comments on that? Thank you. That moves us to agenda item fourteen, committee items. First is the approval of the March eleven meeting of the Operations and Finance Committee.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve fourteen point one through fourteen point three.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes of the March eleven Operations Finance Committee. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Agenda item fourteen point two, approval of the minutes. I should listen better. And let me go back, we have a motion in a second then to approve fourteen point one through fourteen point three, which is the March eleven meeting of Operations and Finance, the March eighteen meeting of Curriculum Instruction and Technology, and the March eighteen meeting of the Athletics and Co-Curricular, Co-Curricular and Community Relations Committee. That covers where we were. Any discussion on any of those three minutes? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes, and thank you for that correction. Moves us to agenda item fourteen four, the Policy Committee Report of March twenty-five.
Okay, good evening. So, we met on March twenty-fifth. We had three new policies that we looked at and one old policy. The policy that we had looked at for a second time was the Public Access Defibrillation Program Policy. There was language that we added about education and awareness on these units. These are AED units that provide lifesaving treatment really of, you know, if someone's in cardiac arrest, they can, it can revive them. So, I've been working with the Children's Hospital Philadelphia, nurses there, and we're working on further plans of training and education this year as well as into next year on these units. And all of this kind of began because of a grant that we got through Aiden's Heart and Senator, I'm gonna say her name wrong, DeMuth, I believe,'s office, Muth. And with that grant, we got six new units across the district. So, the committee moved that policy after making the further edits to a thirty-day review. And then the other three policies, the new policies we looked at, they're existing policies, but we made revisions to them. Two of them, it was Policy six sixteen, which was payment of bills, and Policy six twenty-two, the GAZ statement policy. These are both financial policies, so we made those edits and they're moving to review. And then finally, the last policy, which also was talked about with the tech team at their policy committee meeting, is field trips, Policy one twenty-one field trips. We revisited that policy and updated language about transportation costs, as you already heard, that we will be financing transportation costs also for approved trips to some of our local colleges, you know, community colleges and things like that, that are part of our other larger initiatives of college and career readiness for our students. So, that policy, all three of those policies were recommended by the committee to move to thirty-day review, and that was the meeting. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Agenda item fifteen, new business, as we'll go around the table, start with Dr., I'm blanking the name, Nipper, thank you. Chuck.
So, one comment. I attended the, the Susical, the musical, and I want to apologize to Bill because you have more expertise than I do. The PA system sounded like it was very good and was working. You know, the PA sounded, and one, one of the things that impressed me was the, the quality of the voices, the maturity level of some of the singing was quite good and very impressive and portends a good future for the, for the future of theater at Pots Grove. And I wanted to have a shout-out for Susical because we don't often talk about that. It's kind of, you know, it's kind of the second string or the JV team, and I think they did a very good job. That's the end of my comment.
Thank you, Dr. Nipper. Tanya? Thank you. Anique?
Just a few things. So, this morning, sorry, I just put a cough drop in my mouth, we had our Right to Education Local Task Force twenty-three meeting, where we had the MCU do a presentation, families and educators together, success with UDL. UDL is an educational framework that designs lessons and materials to be accessible and effective for every learner. It encourages offering multiple ways to present information, engage students, and assess learning so that all can succeed. Everyone here probably already knows what that is, but just for the parents listening. But what I wanted to say was that we also had Mrs. Hinkle and Mr. Sawchuck speak there too on the UDL cohort, and they just did a great job representing Pots Grove, and I just wanted to thank them for attending that. And also, the Pots Grove Village's next event, April thirtieth, Wednesday, it's a Zoom event, six to something, till it's over. It's special needs planning for your loved one with disabilities with eighteen forty-seven financial, so there is time to, excuse me, to register for that. That was it.
Thank you, Anique. Patty?
Two things, but I also want to piggyback what Dr. Nipper said. My grandson was in the middle school play, it was the first time, and of course, the kids, the voices, the numbers, they just excelled expectations. The sound system was wonderful, so kudos to them, and I love seeing all of our numbers in the choirs and the music and the band. We are excelling so much here at Pots Grove, it just melts my heart. We've done very, very well for that. But secondly, oh, then my grandson, of course, they go out for their encore and they shake hands, he lost his shoe. So, it was just, it was just perfect, it's perfect for our family. But anyway, I did get an email, and I believe Jay also got an email for the twenty-twenty-five delegate appointments, and this is a conference that's held once a year, which is very important. We, since the pandemic, we really haven't participated, but they're changing some of the, you have to, we have to have our voice heard, and I'm, you're one loud, one delegate. I am no longer currently working in the workforce, so I would like to go to the Tuesday, October twenty-first conference.
And Patty, this is for the Pennsylvania School Boards Association?
Yes.
And Pots Grove can have up to two delegates because of the size of our district?
Right. So, I just wanted to put that out there because I think that'll have to be voted upon, but I think it's very important, and then I'll come back with all of, all the good news that they had.
So, we as a board need to decide, do we want to send up to two people to this, what do I call it? Conference? And if so, Patty is, is interested in going, let's take it one step at a time, should we be sending delegates to the PSBA conference?
Definitely.
Yes.
Any, any opposition to that? Patty is interested in going, is there any other board member, because we can have two, that is interested in attending the conference also?
And I've gone in the past, and it's, it's something we really need to be involved in.
Anique, am I right, is this a conference you were attending? PSBA?
Um, not the, the COVID.
The, the delegate assembly is held at the end of the PSBA conference. Weren't you going to the?
No, I went to the leadership.
Okay, sorry, I, I was confused. Is there anyone else who is interested, other than Patty, in attending this? Tanya? So, we have Patty and Tanya, anyone else? So, nomination's closed, so we need a nomination for Patty and Tanya to go to the PSBA delegation conference. First, first and second.
Does this need to be approved tonight? I would.
No, actually, the deadline, I believe, is June twenty-seventh.
June twenty-seventh?
Yeah, I would recommend.
Put it on the next board meeting? So, we put it on the next board meeting as a motion, then the, the public can see that for Patty and Tanya to attend the conference. And Patty, can you share, or I can send the email to Tanya, or you can, if you're, you afford, so, so you have that information. Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right. Patty, any? All right. Patty, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. And our vice president, Bill Thompson, is back from a bout with illness, I guess. It's good to see you back.
It's good to be back.
You look like you've been through a fight with that. Any, any new business, Bill?
No new business.
Did you say none?
No.
I have one, at our last meeting, Ashley talked about a town hall that is coming up on April 29. I received a flyer that was just printed about this town hall meeting. I'll pause as it comes around. The town hall meeting, the purpose is to give an update, to give additional information on fair funding and taxes, to talk about how the funding formula is calculated and why some people think that's fair or not fair for, for school districts within Pennsylvania. This town hall is on Tuesday, April 29, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the Tri-County Active Adult Center. They are asking people to register in advance. It is open to the public, both Pottstown and Potts Grove. So, so people listening, you can look online under, under Power Presents, or I, there is a code here to scan for that. I don't know if there's people that are interested, they can find that online, Dr. Finity? I'm not, don't know of a better way to get the information.
Yeah, it's not on our website.
It's...
You'd have to search for it.
So I just encourage board members, if this is information that interests you, I want you to know it's there. And Ashley, I don't know if there's more you want to say, because you introduced this at the last meeting. No? Any question?
There was a Zoom on it today, and I, I, or was it yesterday? Yesterday. And I, I missed it, I had something else to do. I had to work. So I will be catching up with Blessing, who is overseeing this later this week.
All right, thank you. And I think the Superintendent of Schools for Pottstown is speaking at this, and I was also told we may have someone speaking from Potts Grove.
I'm going to meet with the, the group before they, prior to the town.
All right.
Jay, also, Suresi and Friel will be there.
Sorry, say again?
Suresi and Fri...
Joe Suresi and...
Suresi and Friel will be there, yeah.
I think, given that we're in this budget cycle now, it's just additional information to help you understand how these charges come about and why we get what we get from, from state and federal with the formulas. Ashley, any new business?
Just an FYI on that, they weren't the only ones invited, they're just the only ones who accepted the invite. Just, just, I'm not going to name any names, but there were others that were, other legislators that were invited that declined.
Beyond Joe, is the, the other one that was there last year, is it going to be there this year? I don't remember his name.
It was last year, it was, it was Joe Suresi, Paul Friel.
It was Paul Friel.
Yeah, yeah, he's over in Chester County, right, he's right across the bridge there. But, yeah, there were others that were invited that did not.
Is that, maybe, again? Bill? Jim?
Whatever your name is.
Bill's over there. Thank you. Louis?
I'd just like to welcome Bill back. It's good to see you again after a while, so glad you're back with us.
Student reps, anything else you want to add?
I committed to Thomas Jefferson University, and I'll be majoring. Thank you. I'll be majoring in pre-medical sciences, and I'm trying out for Division II cheerleading the day after prom. So, yeah, that's where I'm going. Thanks.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I've just been working on my jewelry a little bit more, and I'm, I'm glad that you guys brought this up, actually. I had, I'd been sending emails to Joe Suresi recently about some ideas that I had for this specific, at least state constitutional issue, so I'm glad that this was referenced in this meeting.
Thank you, Adam. You are welcome to attend. You can just scan there and send your name in for, or you were planning to attend already, it sounds like.
I planned to, yeah.
I will see you there. Moves us to agenda item 16, public comment. Is there anyone in the room? This can be open to anything you want to talk about, something exciting happening in your life, or anything you want the public or the board to hear. Steve, you're standing in the back of the room with your arms crossed like you're the, the brain police.
No public comment.
Anything from anyone in the room? Is there any public comment online? None online. Moves us to item 17, adjournment. Motion to adjourn, all those in favor? Oppose? This meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting is April, April...
22nd.
April, April 22nd. Thank you.